Good evening. I'm Marsha Kreutz and I'm moderating this panel tonight. And even though it looks like there's a small crowd here, just know that it's being livestreamed and broadcast, and what else did you say?
And recorded.
And recorded. So there are lots of listeners who are not actually in the room, but we are glad for those of you who are. We're going to have a wonderful experience tonight learning about our candidates. But first, I'd like to ask our sponsors to introduce themselves. Alan, would you begin, please?
I'm Alan Lomax and I am representing Occupy Western North Carolina.
And I'm Avram Friedman. I'm the executive director of the Canary Coalition.
My name is Roy Burnett with WBHN Radio and also the Silver Radio Station WRGC, all operating under the auspices of 540 Broadcasting Company.
Ashley Butcher, and I'm with the Smoky Mountain Times.
Let me stop right here and make sure everybody can hear okay. Is the sound good? All right. And let's start right here with our candidates. Are we missing, we're missing two people? No, we've got it. Are they out in the foyer, you think? Just go ahead and introduce yourself.
My name is Carolyn Bayer, and I am running, this is my second attempt at the, try to get as a Swain County Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
My name is Kenneth Parton, and this is my first attempt at trying to make it as Swain County Commissioner.
Okay, great. There are two other candidates who aren't here yet, or maybe they're not going to be here, Steve Moon and David Montieth. But we will go ahead and proceed. We are lucky to be in this beautiful auditorium, and one of our main goals was to hold this forum on the reservation because we really need to hear from and about the concerns of the Eastern Band of Cherokees. So we'll be kind of focusing on that, and we're going to be giving a little bit of attention to folks who have submitted questions. And does, did everybody get a chance to fill out a question? I'm sorry, a question as you came in the door, if you have one to ask? Anybody need a card? We have a timekeeper who is coming in in a very timely way here, and each of you will get two minutes to answer the questions. And he's our timekeeper, so he's going to hold, let me see the signs for them to see so that they will get used to seeing you holding them up. So that means you've got 30 seconds, and that means 15 seconds, okay? So we're delighted that you all are here. We're very proud of our sponsors. And I think we'll begin right away with the questions that our sponsors have. So let's begin on the end, if you will, with your question.
Sure. What economic investments would you prioritize for the county, and how would you plan for them?
Can you hear her? No.
That's the first in my lifetime. What economic investments would you prioritize for the county, and how would you plan for them?
Okay. So you guys get to take turns answering that. Did you hear her? Okay, good.
Well, I want to try to bring more jobs to the county, and if we do that, we got messed up with FedEx because they promised to hire 100 and something people. They hired only 20 full-time people, and we don't need people like that. If we're going to give them a tax break, let them come into our county with the tax break and, you know, do right by our people. The jobs need to be there because we have people leaving our county all the time because they can't work. We also need a new nursing facility. We only have the one, they closed down one and promised to rebuild and didn't. So I would like to see another nursing facility there for our county, as we have people that had to go to other counties because of this situation. So that's my stance on that part.
Okay, thank you very much. Ken, you want to answer the question from the Smoky Mountain Times?
Yes. To invest economically in Swain County, I believe we need to assess what we have to work with. We need to know exactly what our needs are as a county and what is available for our needs. If we need more infrastructure, I believe we need to check into that and see if we need more facilities. I mean, we need to check into that and see what we do need. I don't know all of our needs, and that would be part of the learning process as far as paying for some of these things. The jobs, I would like to see more people start small businesses. The only way to do that would invest maybe in educating the public more as to what is available for them to start a new business. It seems like it's difficult for some people to find the means to get started. But paying for the stuff, I think we have more money available. I would like to see us spend our money more wisely. And we do need to continue to look for grants, and we do have interest money from the road settlement too.
Okay, thanks a lot, Ken. Roy, would you like to pose your question?
My question is this: As a Swain County Commissioner, how would you advocate for the immediate construction of the new library? Whether you're for it or against it, give me an explanation.
Okay, great. Yes, this time you go first, Ken.
I could not advocate for the immediate construction of a new library until I have more information about the situation. I believe we have four and a half years is the agreement with the people who donated the property, that it has to be built within a certain time. I would have to know what all has to be done to build the building and how much it will cost the taxpayers. If we can get money through grants, what are options? Again, I know that's part of my other answer, but I would have to know the options. I would have to know if we can get money through grants, if we have money we can spare, if we can have money we can spend instead of investing in other things. I know that the county just passed a budget and there's no money allocated.
Say 40 acres, even less than that. If your dogs run free and they're not hurting anybody, especially if they're nowhere around your neighbors, they stay on your property, I don't see anything wrong with that. As far as in town, now, yeah, that would be a different situation because we have so many people coming into town for different events and stuff like that. You have a dog running loose in town, it's going to bite somebody eventually. Maybe a child, it may be a grown-up. But yeah, I say put restrictions on it as far as in town, but out in the county, I can't see putting restrictions on people with animal control like that.
Okay, yes, Roy.
Swain County is set to vote in November about the one quarter of 1% on one penny, you know, referendum for capital projects for Swain County schools. I've got two questions. First one is, do you think that is a good thing? Would you support the referendum for the one quarter of one cent sales tax? And the second half of the question is, should it pass, and you become a commissioner, would you continue to fund the Swain County School Board's request or cut back on the county budget so that the sales tax would make up the difference?
Who wants to take that first? You want to?
Well, I am against the one quarter percent because I don't see it going to any good use. It's not going to go to education, it's going to go to whatever. And if they're going to up the taxes, then let them explain what they're going to do with the taxes. And if I'm elected to be a commissioner, I will make them explain. I want some explanations on where this money is going in Swain County, because we need to know as taxpaying people in Swain County. We need to know where our tax dollars is going, we need to know where our percentage rates are going as far as our taxes and stuff like that when we go to the shopping. So I am against the quarter percent right now because I don't see it going for any good to help our county unless they can show me different.
Ken?
I, as of now, am for the tax increase. Sam Patillo, our superintendent, came to me and spoke, and he talked like we needed it for where, like power rates went up and for maintenance, and I believe if we need it for maintenance and for all that stuff, then I believe we need it. I do not want to cut corners when it comes to our kids and education. And if having a building that's suitable for them to be in, we've got a few projects we're doing right now, one's at East elementary that's behind and they're having problems with and stuff, and the county funded the money for that project. And I do not want to cut corners on things. I would much rather pay a sales tax increase than a property tax increase. I'd much rather see that. And lots of us are already paying that sales tax at other counties, like Jackson County. If we go to Walmart, we're paying that tax at Walmart for Jackson County schools. I wish that we had more local stuff to buy, as like, I mean, I wish that there was stuff that I could shop more locally for to where I could pay all my taxes in my county, but it's not that way, so I do not see a problem with it. I wouldn't. That was one of my questions when they were talking about that, was how do we keep that money specified for these things? Because we need to keep it specified for those, and I was told that it's according to the commissioners, and later on, they could change it. And I would not want to change it. I would want to keep that for the specific needs that we need. As long as our school needs it, then I do not have a problem with it.
Yes, Avram.
As you probably know, Jackson County several years ago decided to pass a steep slope ordinance because as the population increases in western North Carolina, property owners sometimes attempt to build in places where maybe they shouldn't build because of the grade of land, and that in turn can threaten the cleanliness of the waterways as soil erosion, you know, becomes a problem from building on steep slopes. Would you consider, as a commissioner, adopting a steep slope ordinance in Swain County?
A steep slope so that landslides are prevented. A steep slope ordinance.
I think if they build somewhere where there's a slope like that, they need to make sure they've got that slope shored up to where it don't slide, because you get to building something and it's on a grade, it's going to eventually gilt. So they need to make sure it's shored up and make sure it is good and sturdy, that it don't give away later on if there's a lot of heavy rains or there's some snow and ice and stuff.
So would you put that into an ordinance?
Yeah, I would put that into an ordinance because I think that a lot of these houses that's built on these slopes and stuff, they need to go back and they need to check some of those too, because, I mean, I have seen some dangerous situations outriding through the county. But that's not up to me, that's up to somebody else.
So it sounds like you would be for such an ordinance?
Yeah, I would be for an ordinance.
Okay, get it?
I would not be for an ordinance. I would not be for private individuals, I'm for property owners' rights. We have inspectors and we have erosion control, we have inspectors, I believe if you tear up so much ground building house seats and stuff, you have to have an erosion control plan and stuff. And we have things, other ways to get what you need done, done, besides passing an ordinance to stop it all. I'm not going to do that.
Any other feedback about that or some other issue? Janice, do you have another question?
Yes.
All right.
I will not ask you as candidates for office if you have received any corporate funding. If you have it, it would be wonderful for you to share it with us. There are groups that are very concerned about the amount of money that corporations can give to candidates. How do you feel about that? And if elected as a county commissioner, what could you do? What is one thing that you could do to make our citizens more aware of the effect of corporate sponsorship in town?
Well, I have not had anybody to sponsor me. Everything I have done has been out of pocket. I bought my signs, my cards and stuff two years back when I ran. I still have those, and I haven't had any expenses except my gas. And I think that if you're sponsored by a corporate organization, you should have to report it, and you should be held liable for reporting any monies like that. Okay? As a county commissioner, it needs to be put to the people that if you are running for an office and you do have corporate sponsors, then you need to be, you need to have to tell the county, you need to report to the people about this and let them know that you are being sponsored.
Thank you. Ken?
Is this question as in the big corporations being recognized as people?
Janice, you want to clarify that?
Yes. The Citizens United report decisions affected campaign funding, and I'm wondering, are you, and you don't have to, of course, give that enough, but have you received corporate campaign funding? And how do you feel that you specifically, as an elected official, can let the people of Swain County know about that whole issue? We have probably not a lot of information about it as citizens.
I have not received any corporate.
Because you can't find a corporation around here, right?
I don't know how to, I'm sure lots of citizens are learning about it through TV, news, social media and stuff like that. I do not see how they are not hearing about it. I believe it's been, lots of people have talked about it a whole lot, and lots of them, if they haven't heard, they probably just don't care.
Any follow-up to that? Well, because we are missing two of our county commissioner candidates, we're going to finish a little bit early, and I don't think anybody's going to complain about that. But I do want to, first of all, tell you that after the program is over, there's coffee and conversation in the lobby that you're very willing to stay for. I want to just give a shout out, a lot of thanks. First of all, for the use of this beautiful space, for the privilege that we have as Americans for coming together and discussing things openly. We want to thank the Eastern Band Tribal Council, the Cherokee Central School Board, Vice Principal of the Cherokee Central Schools, Greg Barker, the Director of the Cultural Arts Center, Yana Wade, and his assistant, Jay Winchester, and Editor Robert Jumper of the Cherokee One Feather, and our co-sponsors, The Herald and WRGC. Smoky Mountain Times, I'm sorry. Yes, Smoky Mountain Times, got it. So we are very grateful that you came out tonight, that you are concerned about these issues, that you take your responsibilities as citizens seriously. And so I invite you to join us in the, I started to say the parlor, that wouldn't be appropriate, would it? The lobby, to share coffee and conversation. And if you have other questions that you would like to ask these individuals, please feel free to do so. But thank you so much for coming out tonight and for caring.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you all for being forthright and answering questions.
Yes.
Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you.
It's good to meet you.
Good to meet you.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Thank you so much. For a library in that budget, and I would have to know what the county is committing to. I have no issue with building a new library. I would much rather see money going back to the community than to other things. If the money is available and feasible compromise can be made, I believe it is possible to build a library.
Okay, thank you very much. Avram, do you have questions? She, she, didn't you, no, I'm sorry, we switched. Go ahead. My problem.
Well, I'm personally against a new library. We have a library that is sufficient. It has everything that is needed with computers and everything. Also, our schools have their own libraries. So I would like to go back to these people that donated the land and the money to start on the library and see if they would consider a new animal shelter. We need that in Swain County more than we need another library. I am, I am a big animal advocate, and that's what I would like to see, is a new or better animal shelter and some way to take care of our animals in the county.
Okay, she's an animal advocate. Well, Avram.
The North Carolina General Assembly, through House Bill 2 and other legislation passed in the last several years, has steadily eroded the principle of local control by county commissions. Laws have been passed prohibiting commissioners from banning fracking, from increasing the local minimum wage, and from determining local policies on social issues such as who can use what bathrooms in public places. What is your position on the state's attempt to diminish local control in these areas? And what can you and your constituents do to address this issue?
You get to start this time.
Well, first of all, for the last two-plus presidential sessions, we've been under attack as far as taking our rights away from us, taking and giving us their opinions on what they want us to do and how they want to handle things. I personally am against a man going in a women's bathroom, period. I don't care if he's dressed as a woman and he thinks he's a woman, he's still not a woman. In my eyes, he does not belong there. And I would like to see that our county commissioners get control of our counties again to where they can, you know, do what they need to do, not have to run to the state every time they need some little something done. It's not fair to them. And how are they going to get anything done in our county if they have to go get approval from the state or from higher authorities like that? But that's my stance.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Mr. Parton?
I do not agree with any form of government taking rights away from citizens. As citizens of Swain County, we should be able to have a say in key issues that affect our community. I'd like to see more Swain County citizens getting involved in local government so we can help make decisions that will help our community and not favor one group over another. Cooperation and compromise will be key in doing this.
Okay, thank you very much. Alan, your turn.
Well, Carolyn, Kenneth, thank you for being here tonight, and we appreciate your succinct answers so that we can get out of here early tonight. That question that the Occupy WNC has is that the seven western counties of North Carolina have some of the highest poverty rates in the state. How do you plan to reduce poverty rates in Swain County as a county commissioner?
Ken, you start on that one, please.
As before, with our economic investment and everything, I think our citizens, some, we need to focus more on educating about jobs available within the county and the needs of the county as we grow. We need to support and encourage the people of Swain County trying to start new businesses and not do any policymaking that will compromise or make it more difficult to start new businesses. I'd like to see more citizens of Swain County creating small businesses. I would also like to see more kids learning trades. I do not believe we need to lose any trade classes that are taught in our school systems. I know we're limited in areas for growth, but right now, there are currently jobs available that need field in healthcare, construction and manufacturing. I would like to see every position filled that we can fill. And I think that educating the public on what their needs are would help them, and therefore, they could pull themselves out of poverty.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Well, I'm with him on that, on the jobs and everything, because all we have now in Swain County mostly is restaurants, fast food and the train. We have two major companies, Connet and Coca-Cola. We need more and better jobs, and if you're elderly, as I say, over 60, you want to work and you're able, you should be able to work. But I also can't see these young teenagers getting out here, they want to have children and stay at home and not work to get these benefits. Okay, to get the benefits, they need to be able to say, "We will help you so much, but you need to get a job," after, you know, maybe six months at home. Then help them with the childcare and the necessities for that, but other than that, this society nowadays thinks they're a privileged society. They're not. I'm 68 years old and I'm back at work because I'm able to, not because I have to, but because... Not because I have to, but because I'm able to. And that's the way I see it. If some of the older people that wants to take care of the children for them would, you know, like their parents, grandparents, if they're able to take care of the children, then pay them to take care of the children to where these mothers can go to work and not just rely on the welfare system totally. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You have questions for us, Betsy? Okay. So, on the back of your program tonight, you can see the criteria for questions that can be asked and answered, and I think we've been pretty good about following that tonight. This one, from an individual, says, "Do you feel that the Cherokee language program is adequately supported at Swain County High School considering that it is recognized and accepted in the University of North Carolina Public University System?" Let's take turns here, so if you want to start with this one.
I didn't know.
Okay. So, what we're talking about here is the Cherokee language program, where children learn the Cherokee language from early days. And do you think it's adequately supported at the Swain County High School considering it's recognized and accepted in the public university system?
Well, I don't know, I haven't checked into that, but I would like to check into it because I think if we have Cherokee children going to Swain High School, they need to have a teacher there to teach them their language to where they can keep their language going. They don't need to just, you know, forget it and leave it up to the older ones. The younger ones also need to have a say-so and need to learn their Cherokee heritage and their language.
Okay, thank you. Ken, what do you say?
I don't know if it is supported enough. I don't know how it is at the school, but it should be. It's a language.
Okay, so this is something that you would support?
It...
All right. So, here is, this is, I've got one that's a two-page thing. "A few years back, the Swain County Board of Commissioners passed a resolution opposing hydro fracking. How do you propose that we educate our county citizenry on this position? Specifically, what can you, as a member of the Swain County Board of Commissioners, do to ensure that our children learn about our position on the fracking issue?"
I don't know what exactly I could do. I can teach my kids, and if anything is hazardous to water sources in our area and stuff, I believe that all the public should know, and all the public should, some information should be available on the process of hydro fracking.
Okay.
That if it can hurt the water source, it is not a good thing.
Okay.
Because western North Carolina, one of the most valuable resources in western North Carolina is our clean water sources.
Absolutely.
And we do not need to, to hurt one resource to try to extract another resource.
Okay.
I do not know all the ins and outs to hydro fracking.
Right. But if it destroys the water system, you would be definitely opposed to it?
It, we, we do not have water to spare.
No, especially right now, right?
I don't, it's very dry, I don't, I don't know geologically if this area, if it is feasible geologically for them to use hydro fracking here. I don't know.
Okay.
But, if it, we do not need to hurt our resources.
All right.
We need to manage them and utilize them.
Okay, thanks a lot. And Carolyn, what do you say about fracking?
Well, I'm totally against it in the mountains. Of course, it's all, it's been proven that these mountains have no way of, none of the shale or stuff that they need to get these supplies from, so that's the reason I am against it, because it would damage our waters. I don't care if you've got 900 acres and you put it on the back 900 somewhere or another, it's going to hurt somebody's water because water runs underground.
Exactly.
And so, I am totally against the fracking.
All right. Moving on to another question from the audience. "What is your understanding of any working relationship between Swain County and the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians? And what might, what ideas might you have about improving that relationship?" Ken, let's start with you again.
To my understanding, I do not know if we have a good relationship with the tribal leaders or the tribal people. I do not know if we are, I don't know the relationship between the reservation in Swain County. I do not know, but we have to have a good relationship. We have to be able to work together. We do not need to just run to them if we need money. That is not right, and that's not what we need to do. We need to have a good working relationship with Cherokee.
Okay, that's pretty clear. What about you?
Well, he took my answer.
Oh, he did. Well, you can say it again.
We, we do need a good working relationship with the Cherokee. They, they need to know that Swain County backs them because this is a part of Swain County. And so, the commissioners need to get together with the tribal people and, you know, I don't know how to put this, except that just hash things out, more or less.
So, more communication?
And, and that way, each one would know more of what the other one is needing or what could be done to help each other.
Okay, we do agree with that, Ken. Just that the communication piece needs to be strengthened. Okay, very good. Let's talk a little bit about healthcare now. This question is about, let me just state what he has written. "What changes do you support in terms of healthcare options in Swain County? For example, a free clinic, emergency services, and any other kind of health, health programs." Would you like to start on that one?
Well, I'm all for the healthcare services for Swain County.
Okay.
A lot of our elderly people do not go to doctors and stuff because they know they're going to be charged a lot. A lot of them don't have the extra insurance other than Medicare or Medicaid. And if it's not covered by that, and then a lot of them can't even get their medicines if it's not covered by that, because it's like the healthcare system needs to be taken care of in a better way to take care of our citizens. That's the best way to put that.
Okay.
As far as making it better, I know that right now, I've been going to a few of the commissioner meetings, or as many as I can. I've missed a few, but I know that they are really working towards, I think it was last year, we had the, the military group came and done the free clinic, and they're coming back. And the Health Director for the county is, I think she's really involved in trying to get more free clinics and stuff. And there's another thing they were talking about at one of the last meetings about getting free lab work done.
Okay.
Anything that we can get to, to help with the people who need it, I believe we should try to get it.
Okay, very good. Now, that is the end of the questions that have been submitted, but there's people in the audience. So, you've got one for me, Garrett?
On more than one occasion, Kenneth, you have mentioned more citizen involvement. What steps would you initiate to get Swain County citizens more active and involved?
Specifically for me?
Well, it says right here.
I would like to get the people more informed about what is going on. I know when, when I go to some of the meetings and stuff and they say, "We're having a public hearing," and they're talking about, they're going to vote on this right after the public hearing. And I don't know the laws and the order of how you're supposed to do that, how much time, how many hearings you are supposed to have, but I do know that just putting it in the Smoky Mountain Times is not enough for me.
Okay.
To get the public, so I would like to see it advertised more. They, I asked that question specifically before about how are we letting the public know more? And I was told that we put the information on swaincounty.org or government.gov or something, and I don't believe enough people are looking at that.
Okay.
So, I would try to find a way, I don't know how yet, I'm still thinking, of to inform the people of the major decis, the people need to know any decision that we are making.
Okay.
Any major decision, the more input we have, the better decisions we can make. So, I really want to get them involved. I don't know how I'm going to.
Okay.
If it's possible, but I know that there's, I would like to see more people involved.
All right, very good.
Well, that's what with me, I have been to several of the commissioners' meetings where they are going to vote on things, and nobody shows up from the public to ask questions. So, that's, I don't know how to get the public more involved, to get them there, to make, to get them to ask the questions before the voting, and that way, that helps the commissioners to know what, you know, what people's stance is on the stuff they are going to vote on.
Okay. So, it sounds like you're both saying that there's just a lot more communication that needs to go on, maybe radio and newspaper and social media and whatever, as a way to get more citizens involved. Does that sound right? Because we have finished with the written questions, one of our priorities tonight is to hear from the people of the Eastern Band of Cherokees. And what I would like to do at this point is open this dialogue up a little bit, and if you have a question, particularly if you are involved with the tribe, we would like to hear that question tonight. Does anybody, you can just raise your hand if you have a question. Yes?
Robert Jumper of the Cherokee One Feather.
Yes, Robert.
See if there's a little more elaboration, you talked about what quality of communication between Swain County and Eastern Band. If you share any kind of specific achievement, maybe one specific thing that you would see as, do you wish to see that, that the couple relationships between the tribe and Swain County?
Well, I think the best thing to do would be let the tribal people and the commissioners have a meeting at least once a month to get things out in the open to where they will have better communication, and they'll know more what is going on between the tribe and the regular, you know, people of the county. This way, they can make up their minds better, they can, they will have more input, and that's what we need. We need the people to get out there, and we need our commissioners to cooperate with the tribal council. We need them to get together. We need things like this, because if we don't, we won't know what's going on in Cherokee from that standpoint over there in Bryson City. Thank you.
Okay. What do you suggest, Ken?
Maybe a, a meeting, a scheduled meeting between the tribal council and the commissioners ever so often to see what business that we are doing that affects each other. I'm not for sure what all effects we have on them and what they do might affect us. And we need to communicate and let each other know what, what those, I don't know any specific decision that's been made recently or anything that is bad or anything that has hurt one or the other. But, if we have any major decisions, we need to let each other know how it's going to affect each of us. We, we might have to just have a scheduled meeting every so often to see it once a month or something. I'm not, don't hold me to none of this, I'm just, we have to communicate better with them. There's other areas that, communication, Swain County's, Swain County has to communicate better among itself a whole lot. And I don't know how, what the percentage of the reservation is on in Swain County, but I know there's several tribal members that live off the reservation in Swain County. And we have to have the communication, but we have to have the respect towards each other, and we have to have, we cannot go in focused on, "We're right and you're wrong." We have to listen and see how any decision we make will affect each other.
Okay, thank you very much. So, now we can open up the questions to anybody who's here, and so, I wonder if, as you have listened to these folks, if there's some clarification that you would like, or if you have a question to pose to this group. Yes?
Are both David Montieth and Steve Moon are existing county commissioners? Yes. So, her question is that both David Montieth and Steve Moon are existing county commissioners, and that's just, they're not here tonight. Did you have something more?
Why do you want to run, and what do you have to offer, and what experience do you have? Does that kind of cover it? Okay.
Well, I have been in the workforce since I was 16 years old. As a matter of fact, I would work at night and go to school in daytime to finish high school. But, that being aside, I feel like that I could help the county because we need fresh input. The one, the people, the two that are not here, that should be here with us, and I can't understand why, but like I said, we need to get out there, we need to work for the county, we need our input because we would be fresh into the deal, we would know how to handle things, some of the things that they would, that they have just, as I say, slid under the table.
All right, thank you. What about you, Ken?
I'm, I'm not going to say I would be the best, but I believe I would be a good person to be a commissioner because I'm a lifelong resident of Swain County, and I under, I believe I understand that we're a unique county. We have the reservation, we have the park, and we have a little bit of land. And I grew up in the county, and I understand that we are limited to certain things, and in other areas, we are extremely blessed to have attractions and stuff for tourists to come. I believe I understand some of that. I, I believe I'm willing to work with the people I need to work with and any other government entity, any, the tribe, I believe that I... entity, any, the tribe, I believe that I'm willing to listen and I believe that makes me a good candidate. What was the other part of the question?
Um, did that get to your, your question? Did you want any other information about experience or whatever? Okay. Who else has a question they would like to pose to these brave souls? I can hardly see out there. Oh, that's better. Janice?
Bryson City. Uh, have either of you had the opportunity to attend county commissioner meetings where budget was discussed? I noticed that in a lot of your answers, I kept seeing dollar signs. And I know that it takes a lot of money to set up a communication system, uh, that really works. Have, were you, have you had the opportunity to be present at a budget discussion hearing during county commissioner meetings and the communication and budget money for doing that kind of thing ever come up?
I was at a meeting last year when the budget was, uh, put out and I had some questions about the budget then. And this year, I was at the budget meeting. But now, last year, the main concern was our police department, our sheriff's department to be as a matter of fact, because they were not getting what they needed to keep peop-- the people in Swain County. They would bring them in and they would, uh, train them, then they would go to like Macon or over towards, uh, Murphy because it pays more than Swain County. So we were losing money there by training these people that went somewhere else because they could make more money. But I think this year, they have allocated more for the sheriff's department to where they can try to keep some good people here on staff.
Thank you.
I was out of town when they had the public hearing on the budget proposal. Uh, the proposal passed, there were questions. As far as did it come up about the communication stuff, I'm not for sure. I know that I had questions because our budget was pretty much balanced. I got a copy of the budget and it was pretty much balanced all forever department that we had, ever, everything the government, the, the county needed to run. And there was a big question I had was for the special appropriations. We have five million and something dollars and it's line item, it's not line itemed, it's put down as special appropriations. And I would have to, I did not know what that meant. I don't know what it, I don't know anything about that money except it was there, but I would like to find out and see what everything that was lined itemed would be the only way to know about the communications part. I didn't hear, there wasn't but one person at the hearing, I believe, one or two, that talked at the, uh, public hearing on the budget. That's, uh, where we go back to, we want to try to get more people involved.
Okay, yeah. You can't do much with one person's input, right? Other questions that you might have for these folks?
Yes?
Yes, you may.
I thought I was limited to my one question. Question I have is, on the issue of the houseboats on Fontana Lake, some people have suggested that having a houseboat on Fontana Lake is a perpetual squatter's right. That would be no different than having a permanent house, so to speak, in the national park. What is your opinion on those two issues?
I don't know exactly. I know a long time ago, when they made the lake, there was lots of people, you used to be able to buy a permit to have a houseboat. And lots of the local people bought the permits to have a houseboat on there. Um, I know that they propose to take them all off because they don't want to privatize it because I, I do not feel like it is like a, a house on the park. I do not feel like that because I feel like we gave a whole lot for the park and for the reservoir. Our towns was, are underneath that lake. And I don't have a problem, I know it, it don't seem as fair that nobody else can put a houseboat on there, but we restricted it to where we don't overpopulate it. Uh, the way I see it, lots of local people, that is the only way they're going to be able to use that lake. I know that Fontana Lake Estates has boat slips and they get permits through the Forest Service to have their boat slips. So it would be no different than that to me, that if they can make everybody take their houseboats off the lake, they need to make those people take their boat slips off the lake because even with the Fontana Lake Estates, that land was never to be sold. That land was drawn up, there was a contract with the Forest Service that it would not be sold and they found a loophole to trade it. So I do not feel like it's a squatter's rights. I feel like those people, I mean, it's no di-- if you're going to un-privatize it, un-privatize it for everybody.
Okay. Do you have more to add to that?
Well, I feel like this way, I feel like that if the people that put those houseboats out there, they bought permits, they're keeping them up. That's not called a squatter. That is called a vacation home. Most of them only come up here for a few weeks out of the summer and that is their vacation home. They are on the water that way. And I don't see a thing wrong with it and I don't see why they should be able to, you know, tell them that they've got to take those houses off of the water. As long as they keep them up and they pay their taxes on it, there's nothing wrong with it.
Okay. Very good. Do other of your, um, I see smiles, but no questions on this side? Oh, nobody? Yes, Garrett.
Um, I've done a lot of work with folks in low-income housing in several counties, um, in the western area. And I ran into a situation in Macon County where a woman was living in a rental that had land in the water. And I was calling the building inspector to find out what's been done. And he told me, "We don't condemn buildings. There hasn't been more than five buildings condemned in western North Carolina in 25 years." And you'd have to get a county to set a minimum housing standard to enable me to do anything. He's already implied that was generally true for the region. So my question for you as Swain County candidate is, if you think there should be a minimum standard for housing to be rented out, uh, your property should have to be kept up to a, a set standard or not?
Good question.
Yes, I do because some of the people that rents pla-- uh, homes and stuff and rents mobile homes, I have seen mobile homes with holes in the floor, I have seen them just about demolished, but yet they want to charge these people a high price because, you know, they think they can get that. And because they're on low income, they don't want to fix up the places. I know that for a fact because I live right there and there's five trailers right around my house that belongs to a person. And they are not kept up. And thank God, right now, they are not being lived in because Kudzu has took over and I am thankful for that.
One good use of Kudzu, huh?
I'm not for passing a bunch of restrictions headed towards condemning people's stuff because there's lots of older people has property here that has older buildings on them. And I do not want people condemning them and telling them they have to tear them down because then they have to pay for somebody to tear them down and stuff and, and it's not fair to them. As far as for renters, I, I think most of your affordable, i- is that HUD housing or something? Was, was they getting help? Usually affordable housing, if it goes through a program, do they not have restrictions already? Okay, if they do, then, then I don't see the need to put more restrictions on them.
All right. You may.
Well, I'm not saying go in and condemn, you know, places like where older people live just because they can't keep it up. The best thing would be to do is to somebody go in there that's younger or that's somebody that needs, you know, say, "Do you need some help? Help them to redo their buildings or ask them if they would like for you to help them. If they say no, then there's nothing you can do, but at least offer the help."
Any other questions out here? Yes?
Clarify the statement.
Yeah, clarify the statement. She just wants you to clarify what you just said.
No, I'm not saying the county should do it. I'm just saying individuals that live close to these older people that, that needs the help to, you know, ask them, "Do you want me to help you work on your building or do you want me to help you do something?" Uh, if they say no, then that's fine. But if they say, "Yes, I would like some help, I know my building's in bad shape," then, you know, help them. I'm not saying condemn the whole thing.
Can I clarify what? I wasn't talking about condemning a house that an older person lives in. I'm talking about, there's lots of people that owns property that has old houses on it. And I don't want somebody coming and telling me that I'd better tear my place down because I'm, I'm not for that. I'm not for condemning, once you head down the road of condemning, of, of a government entity telling you what your standards are, where's the limit to that? Because I've never seen it stop. I've never seen a stopping point where, "Well, maybe we've taken it too far." I didn't, I've never seen that.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. Yes?
I'm Heather Wright, I'm on double R, it's Radio, WDAH, and my question is, uh, earlier this year, the county, uh, was commissioner, uh, voted unanimously to go forward with a lawsuit to sue the federal government for these funds for the, uh, North Shore Road settlement to get that money back in the state. Uh, if you're voted into office, you're elected, as a commissioner, um, are you in agreement with that petition? Do you feel that's kind of, kind of too slow to that lawsuit? And if so, what are some things that you might, uh, need to be considering with that number of, or investing, uh, back in the future?
Were you able to hear her? Okay?
I can hear you.
Um, you want to just come into this aisle a little bit?
No, I'm all right.
That's okay, just speak up.
Yeah. So earlier this year, back, I believe it was in March, the current Board of Commissioners in Swain County unanimously voted to move forward with a lawsuit suing the federal government for the North Shore Road settlement funds. Um, I believe 2020 is the year that those funds will expire, the county will no longer have access to those. So far, the county has received about $12 million, but there's still about, I think it's 38.2 million in funding available. And so the commissioners decided that the last ditch effort basically was to sue the federal government. So if you're elected into office, uh, what are your thoughts on this? Are you prepared to, uh, move forward with this lawsuit? Um, and if so, what are some of the, I guess, investments you would like to see with that money, uh, once the funds come back into the county if, if that happens?
Thank you. Ken, you want to go? You've got the microphone in your hand.
You want me to go ahead?
Yeah.
As far as the lawsuit, I was at the meeting when they decided to go ahead with the lawsuit. I wish that I was a commissioner before they made the agreement to begin with because the old agreement would have went forever. And these, the commissioners that signed the new agreement, signed an agreement with a deadline that I disagreed with. It, it's a bad agreement. I, I don't know if we, I mean, I would love to get the money, but I questioned them on if we were throwing more money on money we've lost because, uh, I don't believe we're going to win because we willingly signed an agreement saying, "Within this period of time, if money's not appropriated, then we didn't, we'll not get it." I mean, so I don't know if we should continue to fight for it after, and, and you said in 2020, but actually, because the budget cycle comes, I believe, every two years, we've actually got less time than that because if it's not within the budget cycle, if it's not budgeted, the way I talked to Kevin King, the county manager, he explained it that if we don't have it by, before 2020, like 2017 or 2018, if it isn't budgeted during that budget cycle, then it's over then. So if we get, if we had a good case, I don't know if we have a good case. I don't know the ins and outs on it. I would have to find out more about it. Uh, oh, sorry. Uh, I know that that, to me, that's where my family came off the park. My grandpa fought for the road because that's what he was promised and that's what we deserved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Yeah. Well, I know that, uh, the pre-- our previous commissioners, some of them signed away the rights and they said by January of 2020, if we do not have this money, that there's no way we can even fight for it, we cannot ask for anything else. I would like to see it fought for, I would like to see it got because we could put a lot of use to our county with that money. But if we don't get it into the battle and get it settled before the end of 2019, that's the end of it. We will never see another penny of that money from the North Shore Road and that's not fair to us, but that's the way it'll happen.
Thank you. I'm, I'm wondering if our news people might have any comments about that issue?
About, about that particular?
Well, about the whole lawsuit and the time period for claiming the money.
Uh, that would actually, I don't have that in front of me. I'm not exactly sure what those numbers are, but I do actually have another question.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, we've had a lot of conversations about animal ordinance. The North Shore money and animal ordinance, I feel, have kind of taken over in the last two years. Where do you feel, uh, there's been a series of meetings, I know that, Kenneth, you were at a few of those. What are your personal beliefs and feelings on an animal ordinance in Swain County?
On an animal ordinance?
The animal ordinance is a tough issue because it's like with the condemning, setting standards. I don't want it to get carried away and I asked the commissioners if there was a way to limit the power of the animal ordinance because I do not want it going, we had lots of conversations, there was lots of people's different ideas. In the next 15 years or so, there's going to be a lot more changes to our community, a lot more people coming in. I do not feel like the county should be pushing as hard for county ordinance as much as I feel the town should take the lead on that and the town should do their ordinance first because you're comparing two different areas. You're comparing a, a place where, and I know that there's several communities out in the county too that the population's greater in a community than in another, but I know that where I grew up, where our family lives up our road, our dogs run loose. I do not feel like it is fair to put something on us to where if somebody gets mad at us, they can come down there and make a complaint and the people come get our dog and because we actually care for our dogs and take care of them, then we will be the ones paying the fine to get our dog back. I, I don't want us to lose control. I don't want us to lose control. If, I've heard several people say, "We need an animal shelter." I'd like to know our options on getting an animal shelter and if, I've been told, we have to pass an ordinance in order to enforce anything to do, to use an animal shelter. I have to find more information and talk to more of the public. Lots of public's against it. Lots of people want to control hunting and stuff and those are controlled by state laws. But there's several things that there's already state law that has to be dealt with anyway. So I would have to look, we're going to have a public hearing pretty soon, I believe, on that issue anyways. Sorry.
I think that as far as animal control, I went to most of the meetings that the commissioners and the people up at the animal shelter had with different areas and different communities and there's been a lot of feedback on that. But the feedback has been good, but I mean, you know, if you own, say, 40 acres, even less than that, if your dogs run free and they're not hurting anybody, especially if they're nowhere around your neighbors, they stay on your property, I don't see anything wrong with that. As far as in town, now, yeah, they, that would be a different situation because we have so many people coming into town for different events and stuff like that. You have a dog running loose in town, it's going to bite somebody eventually. Maybe a child, it may be a grown-up. But yeah, I say put restrictions on it as far as in town, but out in the county, I can't see putting restrictions on people with animal control like that.
Okay. Yes, Roy.
Swain County is set to vote in November about the one quarter of one percent on one penny, you know, referendum for capital projects for Swain County schools. I got two questions. First one is, do you think that is a good thing? Would you support the referendum for the one quarter of one cent sales tax? And the second half of the question is, should it pass and you become a commissioner, would you continue to fund the Swain County School Board's request or cut back on the county budget so that the sales tax would make up the difference?
Who wants to take that first? You want to?
Well, I am against the one quarter percent because I don't see it going to any good use. It's not going to go to education, it's going to go to whatever. And if they're going to up the taxes, then let them explain what they're going to do with the taxes. And if I'm elected on to be a commissioner, I will make them explain. I want some explanations on where this money is going in Swain County because we need to know as, as taxpaying people in Swain County, we need to know where our tax dollars is going. We need to know where our percentage rates are going as far as our taxes and stuff like that on when we go to the shopping. So I am against the quarter percent right now because I don't, I don't see it going for any good to help our county unless they can show me different.
Kenneth?
I, as of now, I'm for the, the tax increase. Sam Patillo, our superintendent, came to me and spoke and he talked like we needed it for where, like power rates went up and for maintenance and, and I believe if we need it for maintenance and for all that stuff, then I believe we need it. I do not want to cut corners when it comes to our kids and education. And if having a building that's suitable for them to be in, we've got a few projects we're doing right now, one's at East Elementary that's behind and they're having problems with and stuff and the county funded the money for that project. And I do not want to cut corners on things. I would much rather pay a sales tax increase than a property tax increase. I'd much rather see that. And lots of us are already paying that sales tax at other counties, like Jackson County. If we go to Walmart, we're paying that tax at Walmart for Jackson County schools. I wish that we had more local stuff to buy as like, I mean, I wish that there was stuff that, that I could shop more locally for to where I could pay all my taxes in my county, but it's not that way. So I do not see a problem with it. I wouldn't, that was one of my questions when they were talking about that was, how do we keep that money specified for these things? Because we need to keep it specified for those. And I was told that it, that it's according to the commissioners and later on, they could change it. And I would not want to change it. I would want to keep that for the specific needs that we need. As long as our school needs it, then I do not have a problem with it.
Yes, Avram.
As you probably know, Jackson County, several years ago, decided to pass a steep slope ordinance because as the population increases in western North Carolina, property owners sometimes attempt to build in places where maybe they shouldn't build because of the grade of land and that in turn can threaten the cleanliness of the waterways as, as soil erosion, you know, becomes a problem from building on steep slopes. Would you consider as a commissioner, adopting a steep slope ordinance in Swain County?
A steep slope so that landslides are prevented. A steep slope ordinance.
I think if they build somewhere where there's a slope like that, they need to make sure they've got that slope shored up to where it don't slide because you get to building something and it's on a grade, it's going to eventually gilt. So they need to make sure it's shored up and make sure it is good and sturdy, that it don't give it, give way later on with, if there's a lot of heavy rains or there's some snow and ice and stuff.
So would you put that into an ordinance?
Yeah, I would put that into an ordinance because I think that a lot of these houses that's built on these slopes and stuff, they need to go back and they need to check some of those too because, I mean, I have seen some dangerous situations outriding through the county, but that's not up to me, that's up to somebody else.
So it sounds like you would be for such an ordinance?
Yeah, I would be for an ordinance.
Okay. Kenneth?
I would not be for an ordinance. I would not be. I'm for private individual, I'm for property owner's rights. We have inspectors and we have erosion control, we have inspectors, you're, I believe, if you tear up so much ground building house seats and stuff, you have to have an erosion control plan and stuff. And we have things, other ways to get what you need done, done besides passing an ordinance to stop it all. I'm not going to do that.
Any other feedback about that or some other issue? Janice, you have another question?
Yes.
All right.
I will not ask you as candidates for office if you have received any corporate funding. If you have, it would be wonderful for you to share that with us. There are groups that are very concerned about the amount of money that corporations can give to candidates. How do you feel about that? And if elected as, if elected as a county commissioner, what could you do? What is one thing that you could do to make our citizens more aware of the effect of corporate sponsorship in campaigns?
Well, I have not had anybody to sponsor me. Everything I have done has been out of pocket. I bought my signs, my cards and stuff two years back when I ran. I still have those and I haven't had any expenses except my gas. And I think that if you're sponsored by a corporate organization, you should have to report it and you should be held liable for reporting any monies like that. Okay. As a county commissioner, it needs to be put to the people that if you are running for an office and you do have corporate sponsors, then you need to be, you need to have to tell the county, you need to report to the people about this and let them know that you are being sponsored.
Thank you. Kenneth?
Is this question as in the big corporations being recognized as people?
Janice, you want to clarify that?
Yes. The Citizens United report decision affected campaign funding and I'm wondering, are you, and we don't have to, but have you received corporate campaign funding and how do you feel that you specifically, as an elected official, can let the people of Swain County know about that whole issue? We have probably not a lot of information about it as citizens.
I have not received any corporate.
Because you can't find a corporation around here, right?
I don't know how to, I'm sure lots of citizens are, are learning about it through TV, news, social media and stuff like that. I do not see how they are not hearing about it. I believe it's been, lots of people have talked about it a whole lot and lots of them, if they haven't heard, they probably just don't care.
Any follow-up to that? Well, because we are missing two of our county commissioner candidates, we're going to finish a little bit early and I don't think anybody's going to complain about that. But I do want to, first of all, tell you that after the program is over, there's coffee and conversation in the lobby that you're very willing to stay for. I want to just give a shout out, a lot of thanks. First of all, for the use of this beautiful space, for the privilege that we have as Americans for coming together and discussing things openly. We want to thank the Eastern Bend Tribal Council, the Cherokee Central School Board, Vice Principal of the Cherokee Central Schools, Greg Barker, the Director of the Cultural Arts Center, Yana Wade, and his assistant, Jay Winchester, and Editor Robert Jumper of the Cherokee One Feather, and our co-sponsors, The Herald and WRGC. Smoky Mountain Times, I'm sorry. Yes, Smoky Mountain Times, got it. So we are very grateful that you came out tonight, that you are concerned about these issues, that you take your responsibilities as citizens seriously. And so I invite you to join us in the, I started to say the parlor, that wouldn't be appropriate, would it? The lobby to share coffee and conversation. If you have other questions that you would like to ask these individuals, please feel free to do so. But thank you so much for coming out tonight and for caring.
Thank you. You're welcome.
You're very welcome, dear.
Thank you, Avram, for being forthright and answering questions.
Yes.
Thank you for being here tonight.
It's good to meet you.
Good to meet you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you so much.